Good evening, everyone. It is April 27th at about 6:02 PM. We'll call our town council meeting to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those that currently served and have in the past enabled us a healthier and safer environment. Thank you all. So in accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in our audience is recording, and if so, could you please identify yourself?
No.
Thank you. This meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Jeannie, anyone signed up for public comments?
No, there hasn't been.
Council comments? Okay. Mary, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mike. Main topic tonight is the presentation of the final budget, which I realize is an agenda item further on down the line. But just to eliminate all the anticipation, there are no changes in the budget tonight from the one you got in March, but for that one capital expense that had to be subtracted based on the core network failure that I reported on last meeting. But we can get into the details of that later. We did have a very nice department heads meeting on last Wednesday. The only downside to it was that Jeannie wasn't there based on her illness, and we missed her. But we met at the COA, and all the department heads were present and gave very enthusiastic updates about projects that they have pending and what they're looking forward to doing as we get out from under COVID, which, based on some of the governor's comments today, I think will be sooner than we might have thought. Bethany Yao did take a fair amount of time at that meeting describing the restaurant week that she has been planning in conjunction with the East of the River Chamber. It's going to be sometime in late May. And then also talked a bit about this local rapid recovery grant program that's being administered through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that is focusing on the northwest quadrant of town. There are 37 businesses in that area, and if any of them have shovel-ready projects, when COVID funding becomes available, this grant is supposed to provide the mechanism to streamline application for those funds. So the details are yet to be released to us, but there's a lot of excitement about that as well. I did accept, as you know, the resignation of Mary Beth Dowd on April 15th. She's accepted in a position with a private entity, a nonprofit firm, with which she has had a professional relationship for probably 20 years or more. So her departure is bittersweet. She said she enjoyed her time with the town and enjoyed meeting people and the staff at the COA, and so has some mixed feelings about leaving, but it was an opportunity that she felt she had to accept. We sent out requests for proposals on our trash hauling contract as well as on our property valuation services. They were posted or sent to the reminder last week, and they're on the website. The trash hauling contract doesn't take effect until July of '22, but we wanted to get the bid out in advance so that various vendors in the region can have an opportunity to assess the costs and hopefully bid on it so that we can get a contract with a vendor that will help us resolve some of the ongoing problems that we have with that issue in town. In the meanwhile, there've been a number of webinars on the American Rescue Plan. The statewide CEO meetings with the lieutenant governor continue. They were on a weekly basis. Now they're, then they switched to bi-weekly. Now they're every third week, but we did have one today that focused on these new guidelines as a result of the governor's press conference. So those are informative, and they're helpful. You know, you can hear from Sean Cronin, who's the deputy director of the Division of Local Services, as well as a representative from FEMA about some of the practical aspects of applying for funds and submitting reimbursement requests and things of that nature. So they're time-consuming, but they're very valuable, I think. Those are sponsored by the Mass Municipal Association, and they're, as I said, very, they're very broad, and I think of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, I think there's at least 100 mayors or town managers or town administrators present on all of these meetings because there's a lot of questions and interplay between the attendees. Chief Williams left town for a couple days with my blessing. He was invited to teach at an FBI academy, so he went down to Washington on Sunday, and he was back in the office this afternoon. He was very appreciative of the opportunity to go. I think he's an excellent representative for the town in these contexts. And in the meanwhile, he's working diligently on the policies and procedures for the East Long Meadow Police Department, which he keeps forwarding to me, and now I think I'm behind about 12 chapters behind him, but we'll get caught up. It's a very important process to go through, and it will assist the department in attaining its accreditation and certification, which will do nothing but bode well for the town's future liability and training aspects. Recreation Department, as usual, is outperforming itself. I think they must have like an internal contest once a week to see which worker over there can put out the most product. But this past week, Jordy authored a grant application for a Kubota grant, which I think I mentioned at last week's, or last, the last council meeting. It's a grant in the amount of $100,000. It's essentially a landscaping project, an improvement on public playgrounds and so forth, and Kubota is involved because they want you to use their equipment to do some of this work. So I was up at Pine Knoll on Friday, walking through some of the areas that they have in mind for hardscapes. They want to put a patio near the crafts room. They want to get some new benches, some new plantings, re-sand the sand volleyball court, clean up the soccer areas. So the application contains some pictures, and I intended to forward it to you this morning, but I didn't get to that. So I'll do that in the morning, just so you can see what the application looks like. And it's one of those grants that is voted on. It's kind of like the voice. You have to submit and get through like a first step vetting, and then your grant application is put out to some public vetting. So we're very hopeful, but it was well-written, and I'm very happy that they did that. Pine Knoll is such a tremendous community resource, and it's, you know, we know it's a camp, but it's kind of, in some areas, a little bit rundown, and we'd really like to, if not through this grant, then through some volunteer requests, do some sprucing up as the spring and summer months arrive. Recreation's also planning a farmer's market. They already have seven vendors lined up for May 14th. It's going to be from 2 to 7 in the field area across from Town Hall. They have several other dates planned for future farmer's markets, but they're all excited about that. On last Saturday, they participated with Erin Crucial in a private event that was an Earth Day cleanup organized by Erin in conjunction with the Recreation Department. The DPW and the Police Departments also helped out. Erin Crucial was able to get the support of 250 volunteers, and they met on Saturday morning at 8:30 at the parking area adjacent to Leahy Field. They had a little three-member combo band. They had donuts and Danish for all the participants. She had prizes. She had T-shirts. She had all kinds of incentives for the teams that were formed out of these 250 volunteers to see who could pick up the most trash, the craziest trash, the most outrageous trash. So they made a very fun event out of it, and we want to bottle Erin's energy for future projects in town. She was terrific. I have suggested the appointment of Marilyn Godini to the Board of Assessors. Marilyn currently sits on the board. Her current term expired on April 19th, and so she's obviously a holdover as we speak, but she would very much like to continue and would hope that the council would see fit to acquiesce in that appointment. There are several other boards that will soon have vacancies, so we're in the process of ascertaining what those are and getting the advertising in place in advance of the expiration of those terms. And the town continues to work through the issues pertaining to the Veterans District. I think I told you at one of our recent meetings that the town of Munson was contemplating leaving the district, and they did in fact vote to do so. However, they're now considering whether or not they want to reconsider that vote. And so the budget for fiscal '22 for the Veteran Service Officer is still up in the air and is a little more complicated than it ordinarily is, but we'll get that straightened out. Our union negotiations are continuing as they progress. I'll report on those in an executive session later on. And two brief matters that aren't in the report. Yesterday, I don't know if any of you, well, I know Marilyn had the opportunity to participate in the case management conference at the Land Court on the litigation pertaining to Pease Road, the outcome of which was that the judge, Judge Piper in the Land Court dismissed the town's, or denied the town's motion for reconsideration of the summary judgment that was issued in PLH's favor in August of '19. So if you recall, that was the initial decision where the judge said that the planning board was incorrect or violative of state law by not allowing that solar project to go forward. So that motion on behalf of the town has been denied, and summary judgment has entered in favor of PLH. That's all I'm going to say about it for now, but it's not the news we wanted to hear, but that's the way the judge saw the case. And further details will follow because there is another litigation with the same parties because after the first case back in August of '19, when we filed the motion for reconsideration, court returned the matter to the planning board, which took a subsequent vote. And that matter is also on, is back before the Land Court. So the case is not completely closed, but I would say it's 97% closed. And details on that I can give you in an executive session when we want to discuss future strategy in that matter. And lastly, as I said a couple minutes ago, the governor did issue new guidance today with some significant changes to the phased-in reopening. And over the last few weeks, I've had conversations with pretty much all the department heads, but the health director and the emergency management director in particular about my own thoughts about when and how to reopen. So the guidelines that came out from the governor today were that as of August 1st, all restrictions will be lifted. And in dates prior to that, May 10th and May 29th in particular, there are going to be no limitation, well, reduced limitations, or reduced restrictions, I should say, on gathering numbers. So I just have them on another pad over here, excuse me. As of May 10th, outdoor activities will be able to resume at 50% capacity, outdoor venues like water parks and event venues. And you have, those entities have to file a plan with the Department of, with the State Department of Public Health. The 29th of May is the big date that's closest to us. There will be, the limitation will be increased to 200 people indoors and 250 people outdoors at both public and private venues. Parades are authorized. Safety plans again have to be filed with the Department of Public Health. And there's still a lot of questions about how do you, how do you monitor capacity? Like if we want to have the Fourth of July parade, it's limited to 250 people, and how do you measure what that, where that 250 comes from? Is it participants in the parade? Is it spectators? And then how do you monitor that? So the lieutenant governor said the restriction, the lifting of the restrictions is fine, but the enforcement and the monitoring of the remaining restrictions are very difficult, and it kind of creates this sort of transitory period where everybody's sort of just trying to figure it out. So between now and August 1st, which is the date, as I said, when all restrictions are lifted, there'll be a phased-in reopening of certain functions of Town Hall. Perhaps some of our meetings can be held in person. There's another question because some communities want to continue to have the right or the option to meet remotely because this remote version of meetings is authorized under the governor's emergency order, which will remain in effect until he says the emergency's over. So even though the restrictions might be lifted on August 1st, there's no guarantee that the state of emergency in the Commonwealth will also be lifted on that date. So those are the types of questions that people had that are unanswered as of today. But it's good news in general because it seems as though we're certainly moving in the right direction. The statewide positivity rate for COVID is only 1.7, which the lieutenant governor was taking great pride in, is, I think comparatively nationwide, that's very close to one of the best positivity ratings. So we're headed there. We're headed towards reopening. I met today with Leila Johnston about the library, and the COA is another kind of difficult situation now with no director in place, but those are the two buildings or the two sites that I'm most focused on first. So more to follow on that.
Thanks, Mary. Anyone have any questions for Mary?
Mike?
Ralph?
Mary, under the American Rescue Plan Act, I noticed that water and sewer infrastructure is some of the things that can be done with $4.7 million.
Yes.
I remember on Capitol that there was a big water plan that we had for Cooley Ave, I believe. So that's something that may be covered under this to where we don't have to deal with it in the Capitol projects?
Well, I think the key word is maybe, both the question and the answer. These funds are supposed to be distributed on May 10th, the first installment anyway, and the guidance from Treasury is supposed to accompany that. So and you're certainly right, water and sewer infrastructure projects were a main component of this legislation. Query what restrictions will be placed on that, and I really don't know, as I sit here tonight. But it's quite possible that we could fund those major projects with this money. Yes, that would be my hope.
I just wasn't sure if we already, if we take a vote at some point in the budget to go ahead and fund them, if they're going to look at that and say, well, wait a minute, those are already funded. This is for new projects. I don't want to lose out on the money.
Right. That's a good question. I'll follow up. I know so far they've said basically, if you have any other source of funding, like through MEMA or FEMA or CARES, use those alternate sources before you use the ARPA money. But a regular operating or capital budget, I think, is not the type of funds that they want you to use first. So as I said, if we get guidance on May 10th before you have to vote on a budget, we'll have a couple of weeks anyway to figure that out. So I'll check into that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to approve the April 13 open session minutes, please.
I move to approve the April 13, 2021, open session minutes.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I'll start with a vote, and I am a yes to approve. Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy? Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm sorry you jumped right across the screen. I didn't. Okay. I don't believe we have anything under communication, correspondence, or announcements. Jeannie, is that correct? Okay. I know we have no public hearing scheduled. Your orders of the day, there are no licensing matters, but if we shift to 9B under financial matters, this subject is about the approval of CPC funding of $1,400 from the Open Space and Recreation Account for pickleball nets for the East Long Meadow High School tennis courts. I did a little bit of work on that. The first thing I looked at is if we were going to create these courts from scratch, it would cost the town about $25,000 each. We have courts there, obviously, and the DPW has agreed to add lines for us. The request for the netting amounts to $1,400, and the $1,400 would be obviously amortized over the four courts that would become available for pickleball. The high school did add lines to one of the courts a couple of years back, and the court is not readily available. I want to say it's booked so heavily that your chances of getting on that court, you almost need a reservation to get on. And this sport is played year-round, so there's a, there's a high demand for courts. Groups that are currently using the court, our teenagers are using them, young adults, some of our retired teachers. And as I stated earlier, that event takes place year-round. So the total cost would be $1,400. I'd like to entertain a motion, and that can enable us for discussion. And if there is discussion, I'm sure Jonathan Torch is probably in our audience here. We could bring him in for further clarification.
Sure, I'll bring him in.
Okay. Mike, I would motion to approve the Community Preservation Act funding of $1,400 from the Open Space and Recreation Account for pickleball nets for the East Long Meadow High School tennis courts.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or discussion regarding this? Ralph?
You say that this is year-round. Does that mean the tennis courts are getting shoveled and cleaned in the middle of winter? I mean, our tennis courts are outside, so I don't believe anyone's going out there and snowblowing them and cleaning them and playing pickleball in January. I mean, I may be incorrect in that, but I don't think they're really year-round. And my thought on this is, I know $1,400 isn't a lot of money. I mean, in comparison to other projects and all, it's very inexpensive. But I look at the ice skating rink that the rec department came up with the idea to putt up, and in 48 hours, there was fundraising to easily cover the cost of that plus. At $350 a net, it would seem that fundraising could easily cover this. Was that even attempted? Was there an attempt to do any of this, or did they just look to CPC and say, hey, here's a spot to go grab money from to do this, and let's just go there?
Okay, so Jonathan's, Jonathan's here. I'd like to bring him in, and we can start with your question, Ralph, and continue with Kathy and Pat. But I would like to add, when I was told that they were used year-round, I would say if the weather's permitting, obviously, even in the summer, if it was raining or adverse weather conditions, it wouldn't be used. But we do have sections during the winter when we could have very light snow, and if those courts weren't covered in snow, I'm sure that, well, from what I've been told, and I believe it's accurate, that you're able to use them in the winter. So that's how it was clarified as year-round. With that being said, Jonathan, thank you for joining tonight. Maybe you can start with Ralph's question, and we'll go around the room and see if we can bring this to some closure.
Yes, thank you for having me. So I know that, you know, we received this application about a month ago, ahead of our April 1st deadline. I did not know, nor did I ask of any fundraising that had happened before. I know this is supported by the East Long Meadow Tennis Association, which I think, I don't want to speak for them, but may have had some fundraising experience in the past. The high school is also on board with this project as well. I know that the other attendee, the other applicants are in the audience right now. So that might be a question that might be better for one of them. The principal applicant is Dave Macken.
You're, up to you, Mike.
I'm sorry I didn't hear you. Don?
Well, there are, John was just speaking about two people involved in the association are in the audience. If you, if the council wanted to hear from those members of that group, I can bring them in.
Mike, before we hear from any of those, why don't we have Kathy and Pat ask their questions, and then we can bring them in if there's any necessary, any need for it to answer any questions.
That, that seems to work well. So Kathy, I did see your hand second.
Thank you. I just was going to point out that another member of this group has her hand raised in the, in the audience.
Okay.
Probably to clarify some of the questions that Ralph has asked or raised.
Okay. Do you see a name attached to that, Kath?
It's Kathy Hood.
Okay, thank you. Pat, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mike. My question is, I understand these pickleball nets are going on the tennis courts. And so my question is, how is the tennis, how are the tennis courts and the pickleball courts going to be used? Who's going to determine who's, who's, who signs up for which and what's available for how much, and will it be two courts or three courts? It's, to me, the whole question revolves around how are they going to work together so that they maximize the use of the courts?
Okay. This, I think it's a good point in time to bring Kathy Hood in right now, and maybe she can expand on the questions that are on the floor here. Thanks, Don.
There she is. Not sure what the delay was there.
Hi, Kathy. You're muted.
You're muted, Kathy.
You're muted.
Unmuted. Okay. Let me just address Ralph's question about, so I'm newly retired from teaching at East Long Meadow. I had learned how to play pickleball when I was in Florida. So did we use it all winter long? Yes, we did. We were, I started playing in the fall at East Long Meadow at the one court that is sprayed for pickleball. And throughout the winter, and Pat can attest to this because she was along with me, I would actually bring my one-stage snow blower that had a rubber thing to it. We snowblowed. We played the entire season. We were there the day the town came to remove the nets, and I said to the gentleman who was removing them, could you please just leave us one? We play 30-degree weather, 20-degree weather winds. We didn't care. It was our way of dealing with this COVID. We are all retired teachers, new to the sport, most of us. We played literally, you ask anybody at the high school, you talk to the phys ed department, anybody that's there. We played throughout the entire winter. We still play now five, six times a day. We're lucky because we are retired. We do play during the day. There is a much larger group that plays. You drive by those courts anytime after 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, and those courts are loaded. And they've, they've put some markings on through tape, which isn't a very good idea, but the new spray painting will allow a much larger crowd to play on three courts that that instead of spraying three courts, you would spray all of the three courts and you'd actually have six games going at once, which would allow a much larger crowd to be playing at the same time. I don't think I didn't realize how so many people in this town do play it until I actually started playing it myself. But, you know, did I ask Gordon Smith if he would be willing to spray paint one other court? Because they do use it in East Long Meadow High School as part of their curriculum. But really, spray painting three of the other two courts that weren't presently spray painted would really only allow six games. We're saying for fourteen hundred dollars, we can spray paint those three courts, reconfigure them and have twelve games going and leave the other three tennis courts like they are. And, you know, as Matt Flanagan and Mr. Mackin, they've worked with the tennis association, they're on board. We don't have any place else to play in this town, not even anything close. And until you go and see it yourself and see the amount of people in this town that play this game, you wouldn't believe it. I wouldn't have known this had I not started playing, you know, in October, I started playing with, I found people in town that played and literally were there every single day. Now that the weather's nice, the other larger group that Mr. Mackin and Mr. Flanagan are part of, there's their group is twice the size of mine. I, we presently have about eight women that play. And because of scheduling and, you know, whatever, sometimes there are six of us there, sometimes there's eight, sometimes there's seven, sometimes there's just five of us and we just rotate around. I mean, it's a good thing for the town. I mean, well, I would love to see pickleball courts being built for us like they did in Long Meadow when they put the senior center in, they put pickleball courts there. It's like the old tennis people, we get too old, we can't play tennis, we play pickleball. It's the new, it's the new, you know, twenty twenty version. But it is, I know Mr. Page, we played all winter, we shoveled, we snowblowed, we did it, I was there. You ask the town guys, you ask the phys ed department, you ask the, you ask anybody at the high school. We've met more friends on that court. They go, this one guy runs by us every day and they'll go, you women, you encourage me. That's why I'm out here running. It's been a great thing. It's been a great thing.
Mike, yeah, I don't know. I haven't heard from him.
Oh, no.
Well, I guess you're on.
Kathy is a great spokesperson.
Nice chair, don't we?
I'm sorry.
Tom, you're up.
Oh, Mike's missing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, Kathy, thank you very much for your explanation and your time. Are there any other questions for Kathy before we move on to our next speaker?
So, Tom, I just want to follow up with Pat's question. Who's in charge about deciding whether it's tennis that's being played or whether it's pickleball? And is that, is that the schools that decide? Is that the rec department that decides? I mean, I'm assuming once you take over three courts, there may be a conflict between tennis and pickleball. And maybe Mary knows who who's going to be leading this and in charge of it. Not to put you on the spot, Mary.
Thanks, Ralph.
Well, my vote tonight would be for Kathy Hood's group. We'd have to figure that out. Apparently, there were three courts available for both, both sports, so.
Yeah, that's a good question because, you know, the nicer weather is coming. So we do realize the rec will be hopefully using it in the summer for tennis lessons for kids. But I don't, you know, there is, I don't know of any device that's in place right now to say like, I'm, I got it for here. And I, we even caught people from other towns because they did leave that one court up. And we showed up one day and there were people from not East Long Meadow playing. And the guy said to me, oh, I said, well, we're here to play pickleball. And he said, oh, I said, where are you from? Are you from East Long Meadow? Did you sign up for this course? And he was like, no, we didn't. I go, oh, we're on every day at eleven thirty. So they moved. They were not from East Long Meadow. They actually came in in Connecticut cars. So it's a good question. I don't, I, you know, maybe something needs to be be in place, but I play every day at eleven thirty.
Pat, I think you're the next speaker.
Just to express my ignorance again, how many total courts are there?
So presently, right now, in in the, of the six tennis courts that are at East Long Meadow High School, only one is properly sprayed for pickleball.
And you want there to be three?
Well, at, and where's?
Three more.
Well, the, what they're going to do is pickleball, you know, parallel, we're going to go, we're going to go opposite of a tennis court so we can actually put three courses on each side of the tennis net. If that makes sense to you. So we'll really, huh?
Six, out of six tennis courts, how many will be striped for pickleball?
I, I'm, I believe three.
Oh, good, thank you.
The back three will be pickleballed and the front three will be just tennis with tennis lines for junior tennis, tennis.
Good.
Okay. Kathy, I think Kathy Hill.
Well, I think I'm going to say what Don Mackey is going to say. You have Matt Flanagan and Dave Mackin with their hands up to be.
I can answer a lot. I see the outside attendees and I just wanted to make sure all the counselors' questions were answered by Kathy. So all the questions have been asked and answered. Why don't we start at the top, at least on my screen and Don, if you would, bring in Matthew Flanagan?
Yes, sir.
Mike, are you back?
I'm back. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Since Mike is back, I can turn the meeting back over to Mike.
Thank you all and Matt, welcome. We appreciate any comments you have. Kathy's still with us and thanks for the call of clarification and and the snow blowing of the.
Just to.
I didn't ruin the courts.
Some of the concerns, as far, like Kathy talked about playing all year there. So I do think, and we played right through, right into November and December, we came back out in March. As far as the way the courts are going to be constructed, the tennis courts are not being removed or anything like that. The tennis nets will stay up. The way the pickleball course that we're purchasing, they will go on each side. So if you're familiar with tennis, where the baseline is of each side of the tennis court, that's where the nets that we're purchasing, that they will go. So what will happen is they're on wheels, these nets are on wheels, they can be, they will be wheeled off to the side. So if tennis players are there and they're playing on those courts, then they play tennis. And as far as people using the courts, it's just kind of the courtesy, just when you go to play tennis. If there's, if there's more people playing than there are courts, the jet, you know, there's a sign that actually says the court limit is one hour and people are very good about observing that, you know, as far as if somebody's waiting, they'll, they'll play for an hour and they'll get off. The advantage to doing it this way is the one court that's painted for pickleball right now, it's painted so that we use the tennis net. So when we do this, this next step, the two other courts they're going to paint will be two more pickleball courts. So it will give us a total of, Kathy was just a little off with what she was saying. It'll give us a total of five pickleball courts to play on. The one that's already there, we're not going to repaint that because that painting has already been done. But then the other two courts that are in that segment of courts, those will now become four pickleball courts or two tennis courts. The tennis nets stay up, the tennis net X has a backstop and then the fencing X is a backstop on the other side. So they can be used, if there's a lot of people that want to play tennis that day or that night, those courts, those, those pickleball nets can just be swept off to the side. But if there's people who want to play pickleball, they can just push those right over and then they can just play right on there. So it allows for more use of the courts that way. And they're, they're temporary, like she said, I mean, they're, it's a portable fix. I know, you know, David and I spoke to Donna Prather and she had mentioned, what about Pine Knoll, which is a great facility? But the one disadvantage for people, unlike Kathy, who's retired and can play during the day, our group, we all work during the day. So the advantage we have when we play at night is the lights are on. And the high school's been great, the athletic director, Kevin, is is great, you know, running the lights for us until nine or 10 o'clock at night. And they're not, they're not on unless we press the button. So there's no extra power being used unless we're on those courts. So that's, that's the way that it goes. As far as fundraising goes, Mr. Page, there has not been any fundraising. I mean, we, you know, we talked about it and, and, you know, I don't want to sound, you know, cold or anything like that, but the majority of us that are playing are taxpayers and just felt, is there a way to just, this is recreation? This is something for the town. Most of us have been really involved with a lot of other recreation programs, volunteering, whether it's for basketball or kids soccer or different things like that. So we just thought, you know, it's not a big lift as far as the money. It's, it's, you know, fourteen hundred dollars. And the director, Donna mentioned, she said, why don't you try going through community preservation grant first? Because that's kind of one of the things that that money can be used to purchase. So that's, we kind of thought that is fundraising, I guess, is to go for a grant like that. So I hope that answers your questions.
Thanks, Matt. Marilyn?
Thanks, Mike. I have a question from Matthew. You mentioned that these, these nets, as we see it, are portable, they're on wheels. You move them over to the side when you're going to use the courts for tennis. Who secures these? Who will secure these nets during the night or whatever? I know I get the impression that people will show up and play when they can. I would think these nets are going to be out there. If they're portable, they're also easy to remove. And I don't want them to get stolen.
Yeah, and that's a concern. You know, I asked, I talked to the athletic director and I was asking him about as far as vandalism and things like that. And he's in on those courts and that's a concern. He said, you know, the majority of the time, it's just, just kids being knuckleheads where they're, they might try to tight rope and walk across the nets and, you know, like a balance man or something like that. But generally speaking, they're not trying to to damage, damage things or remove things. I mean, it's a concern, but they're big. I mean, they're going, you know, there's wide, when they're set up, they're as wide as, you know, as a tennis court is. If somebody, I guess, was going to go in there and pack that up and walk away with it, they could do that with a tennis net as well, you know, if they really wanted to. And I don't think that that has been a problem. I mean, we hope it's not going to be a problem, but you know, it's, it's one of those things, if we get into how are you going to secure it? Well, okay, you're going to have an association or something like that and you're going to lock it to a fence. If you lock it to a fence, then how do you, you know, you know, the group that we play with, okay, is there a key? But somebody, Kathy's group, and then if somebody else comes up. You know, I think generally speaking, and I know, you know, if you go down to Florida, you'll see a lot of, a lot of the courts are set up in this fashion. And they're not secured. They're just, they're off to the side. I think for the most part, people, you know, there's bigger fish to fry if they want to steal something. I mean, they have to have a court if they're going to do that. It may happen. I'm not going to say it won't happen, but, you know, we're hopeful it won't, I guess. But they're right, we have no plan to secure it because I think that just creates more problems and more, more issues as far as people not being able to use those when they want to use them.
Thank you.
Yeah, Maddie, we, we, we looked at potentially getting a shed and that obviously would make for some additional expense around this. We also felt like that shed would have to be secured and that would make it more difficult to get those nets in and out. So, you know, the way we envision this, this is a phase one of the overall plan. And to address Mr. Page's question about fundraising, for us to build these courts, we're talking about thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We want to build up momentum in the town. We've worked with the recreation department to come up with plans to hold clinics to be able to get more people exposure to the sport. We think it's a great activity for seniors in town to be able to get out and play. So we understand that, you know, raising fourteen hundred dollars is not that difficult. But we also know that we're going to be asking people for some money in the not too distant future. We want this to be the first step in that direction.
Okay, I know the sport has taken off. Part of my due diligence, I was checking around even with surrounding communities and I believe, and maybe you guys can confirm, but I believe Long Meadow has added courts to their facility. Enfield, Agawam. Do you guys know anything about the other communities?
We do. Yeah, they've, they've, they've built them and those courts are very busy all the time, too. So once you have these courts and you start to expose people to it, they're going to get even more use. So, yeah, it's a growing sport. It's the fastest growing sport in the world, actually. So I think it's a wise investment for the town.
Any other questions from the council? Tom?
I'm not sure which of the gentlemen can answer the question, but since they're both with the tennis association. If I remember correctly, just a few years back, you came to us with an idea to create, build the tennis courts. And you raised money through the USTA as well. And does that, you know, present any problems with those courts being used in the intent that they were, or at least in the use they were intended for? I know part of the discussion was around holding professional matches there.
Right. Just to be honest with you, Mr. O'Connor, we are not part of the tennis association. In fact, that association is not defunct, but it's not a very active group being worked right now. A group of us who started playing a couple of years ago with Matt played all winter at Enfield Tennis. So instead of shoveling the court, we chose the easier route and we just paid for it to be played inside. The owners or the guys who run Enfield Tennis are the guys who run the East Long Meadow Tennis Association. They don't think there's any problems with us putting these additional lines on there. They're very supportive of it. In fact, they're both players themselves and they're looking forward to this. And no, it will not affect having matches there because the tennis lines will still be in place.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Jonathan, you're bringing this forward because obviously I believe that you are encouraging the expansion of these or the pickleball.
Yes, the, this committee was very much in support of it. We had a, a meeting just over earlier this month. This is just, just to clarify some of the things that CPC has been doing. So you guys have gotten a flurry of different applications. This represents four funding cycles, so it's not like they all came in at one particular time. This is just sort of catching up on all of them. So I expect this flurry to basically be, be over at this point, our next funding deadline. It's October one. And at this point, the committee is going to be doing some oversight on these applications, making sure they're implemented properly, especially these larger projects. And we actually still, even with all these applications combined financially, are still netting money from our last, the last money that we took in through the property taxes as well as the state trust fund, which the matching rate this year was thirty two percent, which is the highest it's been in a couple of years. So we look good on a, on a financial front as part of the CPC.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. This does require a roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
I mean, yes as well. Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
We've got a full screen, which just makes this a little bit more challenging. But thank you all for your help and good luck and we'll see you over there.
Look forward to playing. Looking forward to seeing you.
Okay. Okay. Under B three, I'm sorry, under B two, final vote for Massachusetts, MSBA, to appropriate the one point two sixty for the purpose of paying the estimated cost for the feasibility study for the construction and or rehabilitation of the East Long Meadow High School. We'll entertain a motion and we can open up for discussion or questions.
Thank you, Mike. I move that the town of East Long Meadow appropriate the amount of in two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of paying estimated costs for feasibility study for construction and or rehabilitation of the East Long Meadow High School, a school serving grades nine dash twelve at one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building of. Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the East Long Meadow High School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the town of East Long Meadow incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of East Long Meadow, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Don. Is there any further discussion or questions? Ralph?
So Mike, we just recently voted on something that was very similar to this. I'm assuming the language was just slightly off, and that's why we're taking this additional vote, which I'm assuming at this point, this will supersede any previous vote that we had.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing and seeing none?
I think Tom's up.
I'm sorry, Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I see Gordon is in attendance, and my question, when, when Marilyn read that, it sounds like there's a lot of circling around, a lot of gibberish. The state is not committing to any amount of money to give us with regards to this, if we approve the full amount, which my understanding is we need to do first. Has the state come forward and said, anything, like forty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent, or given us any idea what that money reimbursement might be?
Um, there have been equations put on the floor, but seeing that we have the luxury of Gordon in the audience, Gordon, would you like to respond?
Sure, sure. Good evening, everyone. That was a nice introduction, Mike, luxury of having me in the audience. I don't know if anybody's said that before. To your question, Tom, currently, the reimbursement rate, although it's not official, what we've discussed with the MSBA, using their criteria, were right around fifty-six percent. So this final vote, and, and I know it's somewhat repetitive, so I apologize for that, but the MSBA is so process-oriented, that I wanted to make sure that with Steve's help and bond counsel's help, and then getting the approval from the MSBA legal department, that we had the exact motion made, so that we can forward that to the MSBA as our final step, and then they take it to their board of directors and vote to send us a funding agreement. And right now, Tom, we're looking at about fifty-six percent of eligible costs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Pat?
My question of Gordon would be, I understand the fifty-six percent for the project itself, and I also understand that this million-two that we're about to approve, or about to move, is also not guaranteed. But what has been the history of this, this investment that we make tonight being returned, even if we don't end up being able to be accepted by the, by the MSBA and build the high school? What has been the history of this grant being returned?
So historically, I guess if we look to other projects we've done with the MSBA, as long as we're following their process, right now it's the eligibility period, and there are eight requirements that we have to complete within the two-hundred-and-seventy days, this vote would be the completion of those eight requirements, and then they would send a funding agreement. As long as we're completing those requirements, and we're meeting all these specific steps, they have always come through with a funding agreement to the town. So that's the first part, I think, of your question. Then after we get the feasibility study, the second part is to look and break down that feasibility study, and decide what is the right project, now that we have information for the high school. And then now you're into the actual project itself, and you're working toward not only informing the town, but figuring out how with now more realistic numbers and costs, we're going to raise and appropriate that money, and then enter in to another funding agreement for the full project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I, I would just like to add, when we talk about the right project, we are talking about various decisions, right? And in other words, we're, it could be a new school, it could be a renovation, it could be an addition.
Correct. The feasibility study looks at all of those possibilities as a solution to the statement of interest, I think our seventh or eighth statement of interest, that was finally accepted. So they look at what are the challenging situations that are presented at East Long Meadow High School, and then they look at each of these possible comprehensive projects as a way to solve them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Gordon? Hearing and seeing none, this is a roll call vote as well. I'll start with Kathy on the left.
Yes.
I mean, yes, as well. Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
Gordon, thanks for your help.
And thank you. Appreciate the support.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks for joining us. Okay. We are looking at nine B3, to amend the vote in Massachusetts, again, MBSA authority to appropriate $3,188,589 for the purpose of paying a cost replacing the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School. Just a short synopsis on what took place. I believe the motion is to amend a motion passed by the council back on March twenty-first, uh, twenty-fourth of 2021 for Meadowbrook. But Steve, maybe you can elaborate on this a little bit, and then we'll, I'll ask for a motion.
Sure. First off, I apologize to everybody, to both counselors, I may have to read this for the length of it. Basically, what we, when we did the last amendment, we knew what we, the total cost, and we knew, you know, what we got. MSBA in the beginning, generally is, you approve to borrow the full cost of the project, because you don't know what's eligible or not eligible. When I was doing this, I'm like, oh, I know what's eligible, but we got it already, and put in the net of what we needed to borrow. That was incorrect, according to the MSBA, it should have been at the 1.7 total cost. We are, there is no need, and that's why in my brief explanation that we sent you, we're not going to be borrowing 1.7, because there's no need for that, and we, the 913 is what we need. So that'll be going, what we'll be borrowing for, but the MSBA requires us to put it at the 1.7 for the amount borrowed. So the only difference is, instead of 913, it's authorizing the treasurer to borrow 1.7.
Thanks, Steve. Kathy?
I'm ready.
Could you take a?
Mike, before that, could I just?
Ralph, I know you're going to have a question, can I, can we, can we put a motion on the floor first, or?
Well, actually, this is a procedural question. Do we need, do we need to rescind our last vote before we make this, or is this going to replace our last vote instead?
Well.
So we already made a motion at the last meeting to appropriate nine-hundred-and-something-thousand. Do we need to rescind that and then take this vote?
Well, it's listed as amending the motion from our vote on March twenty-fourth.
Actually, the one I've got in front of me, it, the motion is to amend the motion that was done on April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, for three million. Did I print out the wrong one, or?
No. No, it's right above it, is, but depends what's considered part of the motion.
And Pat, can you clarify?
Yes, I don't see that as part of the motion, and I agree with Ralph. In fact, I had the same issue with the previous vote, as to whether or not the prior vote has to be formally rescinded before a subsequent goes on. And if I read this, this motion, it says, motion that the loan order adopted by this council be hereby amended as follows. So there's, that's where the amendment comes in. I, I, I agree with Ralph, I, I have a question about whether this is procedurally enough.
Okay. Well, our goal tonight is to put in a motion on the floor, that's, it's obviously different from the first, so would somebody like to make a motion to rescind the motion and vote from the twenty-fourth, and then we'll start with a new motion and a vote?
Some moves.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made, you second it on a roll call vote on that. I am a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Mary? Muted?
Before you get started, I don't know if anybody has the prior motion in front of them, but as I'm reading this one, the beginning of the second paragraph says, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager. The last one on the school feasibility said with the approval of the town council. And so I think it's, I think it should read town council, but I'm not certain, and I don't have the prior motion here in front of me at home. So I don't want to have to correct it again, but Steve, if you have it, maybe?
I have the one that was voted on, that G D gave me from April first, and it says, to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager.
Hmm.
And that was sent to us via the bond counsel, when we originally wrote it up.
Okay, maybe it's a non-issue, but it seems to conflict with the vote you just took, the verbiage, anyway.
You are correct.
Any other questions on, on the comments?
No. Mike, procedurally, I, I'm confused as well, because as Mary pointed out, the previous loan order amendment says with the approval of the town council. And they almost read the same, just different amounts. And now this one says with the approval of the town manager. So I, I'm not sure which is correct.
Yeah, neither am I, so.
Yeah.
I am, well, the, the only suggestion I think we can put out on the floor is, when Kathy reads this new motion, we decide, do we want to change the approval of town manager to town council? And read the motion that way.
My question would be, what if that's incorrect? Then we will be back.
We'd be amending the motion again, I believe.
I think.
Do an and/or?
I don't, I don't have the answer for the correct terminology, but Don, can you help us?
Yeah, I mean, I was deferring to Steve, I think the, the wording came through what, bond, bond counsel?
Bond counsel, Lock Lord.
So if anything, maybe the previous motion needs to be revised, but this one, if this is the, this is the language, I mean, we're authorizing the town manager to, with the treasurer to bond, and, I mean, are we authorizing ourselves to bond? I'm not sure. So I'm just trying to figure out which one of these is correct, but if bond counsel seems to be suggesting town manager, then maybe consistency would, would come into play here.
Marilyn?
Just to add to what Don just said about perhaps the previous motion needs to be looked at, the, the supporting documentation for that motion indicated that the motion language was created by their legal counsel, MSBA's legal counsel, and bond, bond counsel.
Right.
And they sent us word for word what needed to be in the motion.
Well, I would certainly be comfortable with the previous motion, because it had been dissected and analyzed, and that's why it came back in front of us. So if that has any correlation on the motion we're talking about right now, then.
So, Mike, I just pulled up on three-thirty, we received the last motion, and it says, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $913,534. So the last one that we approved was with the town manager, and I believe this is the same.
If I could just make a point of information, I'm going to conjecture that the wording is manager in one place and council in the other, because there is a difference in the two types of programs. As it relates to the high school, that's a brand-new application based on a statement of interest, and it has to go through a variety of steps. We, we were at the point where we appropriated the feasibility study, but subsequent steps have to be by printed ballot for the whole electorate. In the case of the Meadow, Meadowbrook project, that was done under an accelerated repair grant through MSBA, where you simply apply and get approved or not. There's no multiple steps in it, it doesn't have to go before the electorate. So maybe in that, that could be the difference. I don't say that with any proven authority. Is Gordon still in the audience, I think?
We can ask Don, where do you guys see him?
He's in there.
He is.
Yeah, he's here.
Great.
It's good to see you again. A long time no see.
Nice to be here.
The kid that left us.
So are you, have you been following the dialogue between the?
I have. And actually, the, the template that you actually take off their website has, originally, the template had town manager, and I, with Steve and bond counsel, it was changed to town council, and that was what I sent to the MSBA, and they approved it, and that's why I put it into the motion tonight.
That was the first motion.
The one that you just did on the feasibility study. That, that language was approved by, I think, either Kathy said it, or Marilyn, you said it, was approved by both bond counsel and MSBA legal department.
Right.
Correct. So we're all comfortable with the prior motion, and where, where did the language come from for the motion that we're talking about now under B3? Steve?
The Lock Lord, our bond counsel, when we, we sent back the, for the requirements letter, we sent them the, the last motion that was approved, and their review of it, they said, they were the ones that pointed out that even though we knew everything else, that we needed to have it at the 1.7, and they sent it back to us as is with the 1.7. So it's with the approval of Lock.
So.
Mary?
So I, it may be a moot point, maybe it's like Kathy suggested, the fact that it's a different funding plan or program, maybe that's the difference, but I only, I only just saw it as I was reading through it, and the fact that it's different and it came from the same source puzzles me. I guess you could go ahead and vote it the way it's written tonight, just be advised that you may be reconsidering it at your next meeting. And, or maybe not. I mean, I, I just felt it was necessary to point out the difference, because I don't think the town manager has the authority to borrow. I think that's yours as a council under the charter. I think that's yours as the council under the charter. You know, as the legislative body and the appropriations body, I think it's up to you. So I think it's more appropriate that it's town council, but it's just an opinion.
I mean, it refers to the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager authorized, and it states, obviously, under MGL Chapter 44. So without researching Chapter 44, I wouldn't want to guess on it, but I would say that, like we did earlier this evening, we should probably read the motion if nobody has a problem with it, and adopt it, and if there's an issue, then we'll have to come and amend it at a town council meeting down the road, just like we did with B two.
I agree.
Thank you, Pat. So if that's acceptable, Kathy, take that sip of water and go ahead.
I move that the loan order adopted by this council on April 23rd, 2019, which appropriated $3,188,859 for the purpose of paying costs of replacing the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School, is hereby amended to read as follows, "That the town of East Long Meadow appropriate the amount of $1,706,115 for the purpose of paying costs of replacing the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School at 607 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town of East Long Meadow may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended on the direction of the East Long Meadow School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $1,706,115 under MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the town of East Long Meadow incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of East Long Meadow, provided further that any grant that the town of East Long Meadow may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 55% of eligible approved projected project costs as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of East Long Meadow and the MSBA. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount."
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll start with myself, I am a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Under nine B four. Oh, I'm sorry. Marilyn?
No, I was saying goodbye to Gordon, he was leaving.
I was going to say, I didn't forget you again.
No, 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 no.
Trying to pay attention. So I was just talking about, under nine B four, our town manager's presentation of the proposed operating budget for FY '22 per Article Six, Section One of the Charter. Obviously, to be in compliance with the Charter, this needs to take place by May 1st, so that's what we're doing here this evening pertaining to that subject matter. I'd like to add before I asked Mary to chime in, I did speak with her about the budget, and basically, it's the same budget that was previously submitted back a few weeks. What hasn't changed is the governor's income, which is a huge part of the budget. We have our meals tax estimates, and those were done on the low side. So if more meals tax comes in, it's only going to make the budget that much more favorable. All our department heads, we're running about .009, which is less than 1% of an increase. And everything, all the facts that I'm stating are in correspondence with the last presentation that Mary did make. In terms of our oversight committee, they're still working diligently every week, and, you know, they'll be able to put their spin on it at some point in time. The school committee right now is up about 3.2%. The oversight committee is meeting this Thursday with the school committee on 5/6, so there'll be further discussion on that. I did want to just mention on the capital end of it too, that I believe the capital was up about 1%, but I'm going to ask Mary to clarify this. I think the 1% is minus the $200,000 that was already spent to repair the infrastructure failure of IT a couple of weeks back. That being said, the floor is yours, Mary.
Okay, thank you. Well, that capsule version pretty much steals all my thunder. But there are a couple of changes that I wanted to point out. In the budget message that you have in tonight's message, all I changed was the first paragraph, basically, to indicate that the only change in the budget from March 30th of 2021 was the, as Mike just referenced, the failure of that core network project in the amount of $200,000. That was being recommended on our fiscal '22 capital. So that's been removed based on the emergency purchase of the replacement equipment, and it results in a reduction in the capital projects listing from 1.255 million down to 1.55 million. And what that means in terms of percentage is that the capital budget, instead of being 1.4%, is now 1%. On the, the only other changes where I did add the glossary of municipal finance terms that had been included in last year's budget but wasn't in the draft, I made some changes to the organizational charts by departments to reflect some departure of staff and some new hires that have occurred since the March 30th date. And on the capital, because of that capital change or that project that necessitated the spending, the sources and uses columns on pages, and I articulated these in the message, pages 1, 3, 12, and 19 changed. And that's only because the formula runs through the sources and uses pages. So the reduction of 200,000 was reflected on those different pages of the sources and uses. We continue to estimate conservatively. As Mike said, the governor's budget, we're still using the cherry sheet amounts that were issued to us as a result of the governor's budget in January. The legislature has begun its evaluation and its own determination of the budget, but there's been no votes taken, no increases in anything that justifies changing the revenue estimates. We continue to estimate 350,000 in new growth. That's based on the fact that for what might appear to be a spurt in residential housing, there's a concomitant reduction potentially in the valuation of some commercial properties in town due to COVID and vacancies and whatnot. Those are still matters that are under advisement in the assessor's office, and obviously, we'll come to some certainty as the months prior to the establishment of a tax rate actually come upon us, we'll know more. So we've estimated the 350 because we think that's a solid number. In terms of local meals taxes, despite what I reported in my report about the governor lifting some restrictions, there's still going to be occupancy limitations going through at least August on restaurants and things. Excise taxes on motor vehicles, I mean, we would hope that there'll be a spurt in everybody in the world to buy a new car, but until that actually happens, I think it's wiser to estimate the revenue conservatively, which is what we've done. So beyond the new positions that are in the budget, the operating budget as a whole is less than 1%. I'm very gratified by the effort made by all the department heads to cut everything they could possibly cut within reason. They continue, some of them continue to work with vacant positions. And as, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I've said it before, we can spread this, we can work with a, you know, thin workforce for a period of time, but sooner or later, the consequences of that will show themselves. So this year's budget is extremely lean. So far, the finance oversight hasn't taken any votes on any of the line items, if you will. I think they've reserved the right to do that at one of their May meetings. I really don't anticipate that they'll find much to cut. The new positions, as I said, police lieutenant, fire deputy, internal auditor, and a deputy town manager are the four requests that are in the budget. But even with the funding for those positions incorporated into the budgets, we're still less than 1%. So the only other aspect of the budget really is the capital projects, which, as I said, now are $200,000 less than we thought they were in March. They're all necessary projects, in my opinion, and the opinion of the capital advisory committee. Ralph Page made a good point tonight. With the receipt of this ARPA funding, may well eliminate the need to have those projects funded out of town operations or capital projects, but we don't know the answer to that as of tonight. So, you know, the charter requires this final budget to be done by May 1st, so you're not getting much difference, minuscule difference from what I submitted on March 30th. But that's just the facts as they are. So we're lean and mean, and we're working hard to stay that way, so.
All right, thanks, Mary. And we still have another month to go before we get close to finalizing. There is no all business this evening, and we don't have any new business action items for the next meeting. I don't see anything that's outstanding. We'll see if there's any repercussions from B three as time goes on. That being said, entertain a motion for the purposes of discussion of litigation to move into executive.
Mike, I motioned to move into executive session to discuss litigation strategy in the matter of Sarah Menard versus the town of East Long Meadow, only to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Let's second the motion.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you, Pat. This requires a roll call vote, and I am a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
All right, thank you for those of you that joined us in open, and we are now moving into executive.